...of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everybody's here tonight? Is there a public comment from anybody? Would you like to introduce yourself, sir?
Sure.
Is that way, I mean, if we're on camera, that people might know who you and whatever.
I'm Harold Ivory. My company is Municipal Consulting Service. We do building inspections and zoning. I actually used to live at the township right down here in Westland. And I'm here to join in and see what we can help out with.
Excellent, welcome. How many months?
How many months?
Have you been doing it? Is this it, the beginning?
This is...
Ooh. Well, you know George is on. Wait, that means he's the guy that's got to deal with the house down at the end of the... Oh, okay.
That's kind of unfortunate. And I guess I should mention, I do this in a lot of places. Our company has over more than 10 pound chips. So, I had brought some organs, but this looks good already.
Is that the residential one?
Yeah.
He's taking it back, wasn't he?
Yeah, I'll hand it back.
Nobody has it, Kathy, nobody has it, okay? Approval meetings from, we didn't have a meeting in September. So that would be August minutes. Anybody has any questions on the August minutes? Got a motion, accept them? I'll make the motion.
Second it?
Any questions on it? All those in favor?
Aye.
New business. Discussion on proposed zoning ordinance amendments are regulation of large-scale solar, electric energy facilities. Or did you want to do the other one first?
Yeah, we can discuss the both of them if you like.
What?
And just by way of misintroduction and Mr. Chairman and members, I do understand that, I guess in the spirit of flipping the agenda with the residential solar systems and, A, the large scale, I do understand that the planning commission and the board is interested in us developing, in particular, most importantly, the large-scale regulations for the zoning ordinance. And that's primarily what we, we're here to, we're working on and here to talk about to get your final kind of recommendations on a final draft of an ordinance. At the same time, just because of my familiarity with working with it elsewhere, I, in Hampton Township and other townships, we had recently developed based on some of the model ordinances that you see even for these systems for residential systems, what we believe to be kind of a state-of-the-art ordinance for the residential systems that you see accessory systems that folks put on their homes and such. And what we did here is, there are a lot of model ordinances around for the large scale and the small scale, but expressing the same concerns exactly as you did about first responders and these things on the roofs. What we did in Hampton Township with our fire marshals up there and a couple other colleagues of theirs up in that area was we took the state's model, which itself was supposedly designed, it was designed with that in mind of that. And then they actually kind of rode through and made, okay, houses work on the ground and such, and they even went through from beginning to end through a construction, through trying to respond to a fire, and they actually enhanced, built off of it, the requirements of the generic sample ordinances that you see, in particular to like safeways, fireways, places to get up, making sure they're not putting them in places that can harm and inhibit access of the first responders. And you'll see a lot of specs that they developed on, with aqua crazy like a billboard, it's residential, but when you get close enough to have to deal with it as a first responder or an owner or anybody coming by, the markings on the house and the, of the panels and all the stuff that somebody needs to get to to shut it down, for example, in order to respond to a fire. So that's kind of what that draft is.
All right, quick questions, you ready?
Yes, sir.
You're ready, okay.
Being that I'm not a fire marshal, but yeah, I'll take it.
I'm not worried about fire marshal. Actually, the fire thing, you know, the average number of houses that burn down, have to cut through the roof is very small, but if you ever have to replace the shingles on your roof, you just double the price of what it's going to cost you to do that.
I guess they can do that with their homeowners.
Yeah, yeah, so as a homeowner, the worst place you can put it regardless of the fires, it's on your roof, because when your shingles need replaced, it will double the price.
Take them off and put them back on.
There you go.
And all these ordinances, they're kind of modeled where you might have a plan of lots, half, quarter acre, half acre lots. Here, you actually have the luxury with more open spaces and larger lots of actually being able to accommodate systems that are in the backyard, ground-based systems, which they cover here as well. Most places don't like the ground bases based in the front yard, but then when you have them in the backyards, you have more luxury in terms of how invasive they are to the neighborhood.
So Tom, second question for you. As I leaf through this very quickly, I see no exception based on size. I just keep seeing definitions and seeing what they are. And if this is required to, if I don't have it as part of my, as part of my main buildings, then every single solar charger that I have on my fence system at home is going to fall under your industrial thing, and I don't know if I like that.
What do you mean under the industrial? It would still be accessory. And tell me-
Even if it's on the back 40 and not anywhere near a building?
Those are, that would still be accessory. And...
Okay.
If you see some light, no, 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 because this is what we want to do. We don't have to go out of the gates tonight if you want to digest it. And frankly, there's a good example, because again, a lot of these are done mainly for the roof systems, because 99% of folks do end up, you know, putting them on their roofs, but would you just say you have like a fence-type design?
Oh, no, I got about a dozen of them. They hang different places along the fence row.
Yeah, so-
They're only this big.
Sure.
Yeah.
And so, but no, no.
They are by definition, everyone's definition fits exactly what they are. They output a single voltage, they are a food cell, they are, they are-
Right. But that doesn't turn you into a solar, maybe solar farm, it's still accessory. If you want to mark up, because, you know, on a fly, I'm not, you know, take us a picture of your system. Because that would impact maybe-
You've seen cow and horse fences, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So just imagine, imagine every time you, like every third or fourth corner that you see in one of those systems, or maybe by every gate.
Right.
There's one of these hanging, as Kathy said, they're like, yay, they're, they're either a 6 volt or a 12 volt battery inside them, but they are a single voltage out, they are a solar cell, they are being used for a purpose.
Right.
That's not for my house.
So then for, yeah, and for example, this, this implicates like rear setbacks and stuff, and we don't want to inadvertently, right? So if yours, and a lot of fence lines, they're the property lines, right? So we don't want to inadvertently kind of say five feet from rear, right?
Right.
If we, so that's, yes, that's the sort of thing-
I guess my point is, I would like it, if you're making notes already, I would like it if this had something in it that said to you, something to the equivalent, you know, generates over 1 kilowatt, something in some type of a measurement that's reasonable. Nobody's going to put a house system in unless you're doing, yeah, a large enough system that makes it worthwhile for the money you spend. So if you pick whatever size you want, but, you know, and I'll, I'll try to look up where I think a good number would be. I'm just saying, if you have a size point in there that's saying this applies, even on the residential side, this applies to systems, singular systems that are over this amount of energy produced. I think that would help alleviate. I went camping, right? Glacier National Park, you can't count the number of people that have those little battery pack ones and flip open their solar cells.
Oh, yeah.
To keep, okay? If I, if I had a picnic on my back property, I'm all of a sudden got to go someplace and get him to sign off saying it's okay for me to have it based on this.
Yeah, and those actually, they're not even fixed to the lamps, some of those.
There you go.
Yeah, so-
That's why I'm saying, you, if you, if there's some kind of-
And they're actually maybe kind of excluded by definition, but obviously, yeah, I want to make sure you don't-
Well, that's why I said to you, as I looked down through this, because here's the truth. If I flip that thing open and I set it on the ground to collect the solar energy, which is what every camper out there was doing, isn't that not a ground mounted system?
When you say mounted, there's a, there's a, and again, we can clarify the definitions. That implies a permanency.
Okay.
So, but at the same time, you're right there, because on the other hand, maybe somebody on dire drive, because there are systems, and there are systems even for bigger lots where-
Yeah.
It is kind of the equivalent of what you have on your roof, but it's set up out there in that, okay, well, that may be good on a one acre plus lot, but, and even the gizmos you have, maybe somebody doesn't, maybe folks on dire drive type, which is kind of the equivalent of suburban, maybe they don't want 45 of, you know, Mr. Cowless things in their backyard versus-
So along, unless there's that size requirement, unless, along with your notes, does that mean that Pendot's going to have to get a permit off him for every one of these? Does that mean Range is going to have to get a permit off for every well site?
That's what I wanted to say. Every well site has solar panels on it.
And Pendot, Pendot is starting to use them like crazy.
Yeah, they got to write down the intersection.
Yeah, and again, those are instructions, those are, these are, these are accessory to residential primarily.
But if it's not residential, it's industrial, is it still going to fall under?
Well, if you, industrial, again, these are accessory. If you had a business, like say on the subway store, they wanted, you know, it's really kind, versus, you know, the other thing we're going to look at, which is the large scale, that, what you're talking about doesn't change from this to that, it would just require us to get, again, maybe hone the definitions to make sure we're not picking off a transient, Pendot signs, et cetera, the other examples you get.
Okay, well, then, because I'm used to a different legal interpretation, if it didn't fit the residential, it was going to be industrial. You're telling me that will not be the case? There could be things out there that won't fit either of these?
Let me, let me clarify a little bit on that residential version, commercial. These are, these photo, you know, vaultage systems, what you usually see on your roofs, but, okay, this is accessory to your principal use of your property.
Okay.
So if you're, forget about, whatever your is, whether it's a commercial use, subway, uh, the, the, what, you know, uh-
Range's well site?
An office building, no, no, an office building that's serving its own use, not generating, you know, large scale, which is, you know, the equivalent of producing energy in a solar farm. These, these, this ordinance deals with when a property owner, whether it's a resident with a house, something with a farm, a house or whatever, or say you have a business, whether it's a two-story, if you had in a business district, say there was a, you know, the real estate office, they might be able to put one on their roof, et cetera, or whatever. Those are all accessory, could be accessory to a business or accessory to your home. That doesn't make it into what, in solar form stuff. These all deal with, again, the kind of contractions that we either put on our house to serve our own house, maybe sell a surplus back, or to serve my own subway, Rite Aid, et cetera, business, apartment building, et cetera, the same, same thing in mind. These are all accessory, not as a, as a principal use.
All right, so let me give you the next example. I have a 400 amp service, which I believe do have a 400 amp service. So I want to put in a solar farm to operate the farm, the wedding business and the house whenever I need electricity. But West Penn's willing to buy that electricity off me that I don't use.
Right.
When I'm not using it live. So am I an industrial, am I an accessory user?
That's still an accessory use to your, what you just said.
Okay.
If you have, for example, take each one of those uses that your lot independently have, you have your wedding venue. Suppose you want to have, instead of paying for electricity, you know, you want to have solar panels on your wedding venue roof. That's this ordinance. Over the way, you have your little retail shop, hey, why do I want, same thing, you have one for there, then your homestead's on the same property. Yes.
And the fact that I'm selling that electricity back to the power company does not put me into this other category.
Exactly, I mean, when you think about the thing we're going to talk about, the solar forms, I mean, kind of think about that as the equivalent of different technologies, different animal, but you have the well pads out here facilities that are, that are set up to be for the purpose of extracting and transmitting energy. Solar farms that we're going to talk about in a moment, those, that's the quote-unquote a commercial industrial primary, that's a use in and of itself. It's just like, okay, my use is a, you know, it's a warehouse, a light industrial facility, a, et cetera. A large commercial agricultural operation is another use category, and here's another use category is, oh, oil and gas wells, right? Compressor stations, okay? And there's another thing now that's come to be, which are, is this generating electricity by placing all these panels on in some acreage and doing what they do to create and transmit the, the electricity, just like you transmit the natural gas from a well, this is to generate and transmit energy that's produced through these solar gizmos.
So, we already have industrial zoning, correct, Westland? So I, I guess my next question is, these other townships, the one we just read about here, Jefferson, so Jefferson's, you know, they're talking about 1,000 acres. Was that whole, was that old spoiled pile all industrial?
Now, these by and large, you're seeing them, whether, and I've had calls even from landowners, because there's a lot of just like the leasehold stuff that went on in the other industry, up all the way up to Erie, all the way down, folks that are farmers and own large farm properties. In fact, you're seeing the farm owners that have it on their well and-
That isn't an agricultural thing.
Yes.
If these are an industrial function, wouldn't somebody buying a 200 acre farm and trying to put solar farm on top of it, they would have to get that rezoned, would they not?
No, because it's not-
No, they're typically allowed in the same areas where you might find oil and gas.
So it's not industrial?
It's, it's not residential, in the same vein as one would argue whether or not a Marcellus shale operation is industrial or not. It's a rural economic activity that's found to usually be consistent with operations on agricultural lands, up the lands, farmlands. There are folks that actually have, could have Marcellus shale well and solar generation on the same study.
There's state statutes that protects the oil and gas wells, if I remember correctly, being able to be an agricultural area. Are you saying to me that same statute is going to apply to solar farms?
No, that's the Oil and Gas Act. The Oil and Gas Act is geared towards-
So if we're claiming it's industrial, how is it allowed to be outside of the industrial zone? That's what I'm having trouble understanding.
It's being used, accessory used.
No, no, that's the other-
It can't be an accessory-
We're dovetailing into the other ordinance, all right?
Well, here's the thing, you can't, to me, we can't talk about just one ordinance than the other, because we have to define where this line is.
Well, there's, on, on this, on the accessory ones, they are universally allowed, whether it's up to your house or-
In my side door.
They're allowed in every zoning district. It's just an accessory use, solar panels, solar gizmos, okay? That, it is strictly a topic of discussion of the other ordinance, the large scale, where they would be placed. The zoning officer recommended, and if you look universally, again, throughout the state, they're typically found, developed and allowed, a lot of them are developed by farm owners and property owners. And Mr. Project recommended as well that they be allowed in the A zones and in the large, are tracts and the, and the, and the commercial areas, not the business, the-
So the, I mean, I, let me first say, I think Jack was 100% right in what he said at the very beginning. There's no way I'm going to really want to do any kind of a motion on this thing.
Oh, no, 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 this is an introductory for us to get, talk them out, hand them out, and we can regroup and take back, yeah.
So-
This is not, and again, this is emanating from the planning commission in the first instance. This did not come down, you know, sometimes there's an ordinance, fault sign, whatever zoning thing, where the board says, hey, we'd like to do that, they commission it down to you for review. This was kind of recommended that we bring and start the discussion on.
I've actually been waiting on this since I saw the first sign show up on 18. So it's, it's interesting that we finally get to it, because it's, yeah, it's coming. You guys interrupt me any time, I got a main question, like you keep asking, you know that, so I would almost rather delve into this concept of where is this line between the two, and how do, how do the, how do we claim that if it's an industrial process, it doesn't have to be in the industrial zone? That's, that's, that's the part of a Pennsylvania statute, I guess, that I don't understand.
And I guess without, you know, there's not any kind of, I don't have any stance on it, I don't care. That, kind of when you use a word, that's kind of with a small i. When you look at, and even when we had the discussions about, you know, appropriate locations, which we found to be throughout all the zoning districts were appropriate for, say, Marcellus shale, for example, and those folks from the city and suburbs may not be familiar as you folks are out here and as I'm privileged because of having a Pennsylvania dairy farm family, a farm, most dairy farms, my family's dairy farm meets that same definition, if you wanted to take a Black's Law Dictionary glossing definition of what is a commercial, industrial, light industrial, sometimes heavy industrial operation, that's Pennsylvania dairy farm. So that, there is a distinction, and when we speak in terms of compatible uses, you're really talking about more rural agricultural economy compatibility as opposed to, is the, you know, I versus, et cetera, and that's the basis on which our solar farms- Our oil and gas regulations have been upheld.
Are solar farms part of the mandate of the Department of Agriculture?
What do you mean mandate?
Well, to me, the breakpoint, and we had this discussion dealing with llamas or something, if I recall correctly, not that long ago, the breakpoint between whether or not something is truly a farm, is whether or not it falls under the guidance and definitions and statutes of the Department of Agriculture. If solar, well, you want to call it a solar farm, if the solar facility doesn't fit under the Department of Agriculture, how does it fit the ability to be in an ag thing and not in the industrial?
Again, when you even look, you know, you use the farm word as well, we're talking, lands out here, they may be farms, we're really talking about rural economic uses, whether they may be an active farm or open lands that are suitable for agricultural and rural uses that are, you know, of the kind you find in the A zone, et cetera, already, or that's kind of what you look at. It's not whether it meets a state definition of a farm, whether one, you know, on a zoning way.
If I take my bulldozer and I dig small holes and I stick half of my junk car sticking down, I can go claim that that is, I'm, I'm farming cars now, I'm farming junk vehicles, right? Hey, at some point, there has to be a breakpoint where you either say, this thing's industrial or it's not.
And that would be part, and the larger question is, where is it appropriate zoning district wise for you to-
Because we've already done that. I can't put a junkyard on my farm. I have to use, we're, you know, we have a big list in that book that's right over there that says, you want a junkyard, it's got to be here. You want this, it's got to be here. Why can't we just simply say, if you want to have a solar system that's over 200 kilowatts, it has to be industrial?
You can.
You can.
Isn't that simpler than-
But you mentioned something that, you have a wedding venue? The wedding venue is in a, what district is it in? Agricultural?
It is, actually went through the whole process in this township to get it declared as being part of the ag tourism function. We sat here 15 years ago in front of zoning board and went through the process to make sure that it was on the record, that the township agreed it was part of the ag tourism business.
Does that change your tax base when you do that? That's my question. Putting solar, any solar panels?
They made me give up the one acre around now.
I don't know whether, you know how it-
Probably, it's a farm.
We've said it's a normal gas, they separate.
I said it works, I didn't answer that.
Facilities and not farms. Who calls, some people call them facilities and not necessarily farms.
Right, okay. Well, that's what I'm saying, and if it's a facility, you know, that's, I hate the word farm, I refuse to call them solar farms, because it's a misleading statement.
We don't, we call them large-scale solar-
Facilities?
Electric energy facilities.
Right. So what would be, if I decided, since Range has so much excess gas that they can't sell it, so they're, they have to break the way down, so, you know, I, I want to go and I want to put in a 2 megawatt natural gas turbine on the back of my farm, Tom.
I'm listening, I'm okay.
Is that accessory use, or is that, is that an agricultural use? Or is that an industrial use to generate electricity on my farm?
For your farm?
No, I'm going to sell it, it's too, I can't use it.
That's actually what is going on around the state and around the country on farmlands. Again, I've had people call me to negotiate so, farmers from Erie County and such to look, I'm just telling you that that's, if you can see in the marketplace, that is where, and again, I'm not advocating anything.
But you're missing my point. If I want to take my 20 acres of my farm and I want to put a turbine on it to generate electricity versus 200 acres of my farm to put solar panels on them, is it any different than what these people are trying to do?
Again, that's part of the topics for you guys to look at. What I would suggest you guys do is take, I'll send out if you don't have your, look at your land use table, look at these. The other two handouts I have, by the way, that one, the one ordinance is pretty, the two handouts hold other criteria that you would want to put into this. For example, whether there should be a land use approval, what the setbacks may be, buffering and all that kind of stuff. There's also actually part of the package provisions that allow you to accommodate where folks are doing, because there are places where folks are, they're, they are farming actually around these things. They have cattle and whatnot, livestock.
Oh, I've read all about that one.
And they give some accommodations like on the setback requirements and whatnot, if you are incorporating it.
Supposed to be great for sheep, Kathy.
And, yeah, yeah, there's some literature suggests that they're compatible with sheep.
Yeah, that's exactly. Nothing wrong with it.
But they call it solar grazing, so.
I know, I know.
It's just in the top, okay? So, and again, this is kind of, I wanted to put this out here just for discussion's sake of the whole thing, looking at what you're talking about, looking at what you want to do with setbacks, again, from your residence, et cetera, how much land you need, et cetera. You know, and where they should be. And I would, I would caution us all too, that, not cautious, but in the context of, when you look at the use chart, you know, when you see, it's, we call it- you know, when you see, it's, we call it, you know, just like special exceptions aren't special, and they're not an exception, A zones, they're really not ag zones, it's the rural economic zone is where they are, and when you look at the uses that are permitted here and universally in your A zones, I mean, they go down to, you know, everything from agriculture-related business and whatnot, but they also go to, you know, you could have a large-scale commercial business, everything from golf courses, country clubs, oil and gas that's there, and actually, even before the Oil and Gas Act, you still had other mineral extraction, you can have actually junkyard in the A zone, warehouses, mineral extraction, mine port, or etcetera. You could have, somebody could come out in the middle of the thing and do a grove processing place, recuration, utility, public utilities, commercial schools, etcetera, you know, let's see what else, tank pads, that's associated with COG. Wind energy systems are already allowed in the agricultural zones and whatnot. So there are a variety of uses that could be labeled in one fashion or another as at least non-agricultural, if not industrial, commercial, etcetera, that you find in, you know, those sorts of zones.
May I ask you a question, sir?
Yes, sir.
The, when I look through the back of this, and a lot of the markings and everything, is that not already covered under the NEC?
Either in the UCC or the NEC.
Yeah, so. Are we duplicating, is what I guess I'm trying to get to? I'd rather stay with the current edition of one of them versus us creating an ordinance that would have to be updated when a book gets updated.
Before we read it, I mean, it just mentions that, you know...
Well, again, you don't have to know today either, you can take it home and repeat it too, I'm just curious.
We're all going to.
I got to the blue pages, the 11, page 11, well, we all of them have blue pages.
You've got a special one.
Oh, here, it was a special one.
No, no, it says the same three pages.
Yeah, I'll tell you what, the thing I marked handout is actually because of copy issues, it's kind of too different. It has some things to look at, just in terms of some specs and has some...
But you've got setbacks on there, and sometimes we don't even follow the setbacks that we have. Sometimes they get overlooked for other things too, and, you know...
Oh, right, by the way, non-enforcement are overlooked because they're not in the book.
Well, maybe both, you know, so...
By the way, I misspoke, I thought junkyards are not allowed in the A zone, although we do like...
We have, we have junkyards.
We have some, we may have some non-conforming ones. And accessory to farms is not considered, some of that stuff, it may appear like a junkyard, it's actually not a junkyard.
Elmer.
Acres, exactly, acres.
There's, it just feels like we're opening up a can of worms, Tom.
We allow a large, you could operate a landfill in the agricultural zone as well, so that's...
As a permitted or as a conditional?
A conditional use is a permitted use.
I, I understand.
Yes, we allow them as a conditional use.
Right, but the junkyard is not a part of the call.
No, I, no, I did say I misspoke on that, I was, I meant to say the, the...
Yeah, I remember how much activity we had making that list, so, I remember her very well.
With that, just homework, I guess, to take home and come back and talk about further.
And we appreciate your work on that.
And again, a lot of the nuts and bolts of that, regardless of the zone you pick, you still want all the other nuts and bolts to, whether it's in one zone or the other.
I don't disagree with that concept, I just, I'm trying to envision, considering, without going through a huge amount of zoning work, and somebody coming in and saying, hey, I bought up this 600 acres, I want to put a solar, so I need you to rezone it industrial, it's like, at least that's another hoop they gotta jump through, even if in the end run, we end up having to grant it to them, but I think it needs to not be a permitted or conditional in agricultural outside of your residential function, and that's why the size limit is what becomes worthwhile. It's not worth building if you're not doing, you know, several hundred kilowatts.
And again, you know, I, you know, and I understand, I get you, I get that you're pouring as well, and I don't know what I've seen, for example, just like when you say accommodations here, that have been made where you are farming, okay, but that can be a gain too, right?
Sure.
On the other hand, what if you have somebody who, you know, whether mine laws on central Pennsylvania, or folks that legitimate farmers that are actually, are trying to run a farming operation, and have some, maybe, and I haven't seen it, but maybe we could think, maybe there's ways you could create maximum, just like in the suburbs, or everywhere you have maximum lot coverage kind of concepts, maybe you could do maximum percentage of, you know, maximum...
Acre.
Acre, what?
Or kilowatts per acre or something. Yeah, there's, there's actually...
Maybe there are ways to make it almost like, we created those accessory business uses, maybe it's, it's kind, you know what I mean, something like that, where you can have that.
The Penn State Ag Magazine already had the article, I forget what, I think it was about 20 acres worth of panels that a large dairy function in central Pennsylvania put up for that exact purpose. The amount of electricity it takes to run a dairy farm anymore, just a milli...
What are the large dairy farms where you have a thousand, couple-headed?
So, they took 20 acres that they weren't able to farm, because it was on a hillside, blah, 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 it happened to be south-facing, they said...
Perfect.
Why not? And so, I understand this, and that's why I'm saying, it, I would rather try to work towards defining this based on size and the accessory use side of things. And then if the industrials come in, we have a statement in here that says, if it's over this size, it's industrial. There's your industrial zones, where in Westland do you want to put it?
Let's get into your other, your other section, the other, let's get into the industrial side one, the heavy ones.
That's it, actually, I mean...
Oh, you're doing the...
Well, I beg your pardon, we actually ended up talking it through without handing it out to him. Here, the, again, this is kind of like the model that we could build on, if you're gonna have an ordinance, right, it's an ordinance, so here, if you want to hand those out, that's actually kind of the primary template that you would build on, if you want to take one and pass them.
I think we all have.
No.
This is the, the one that we just talked about, that was your...
Bigger facilities.
These are residential.
Except for his gizmos, primarily the rooftop ordinance is that one. The next one is exactly what we're talking about, which is this large-scale, not using the F-word, facilities. They're generating electricity. Okay, so that's the ordinance itself, and again, it's just the first discussion draft. The second thing I'm gonna hand you out, all of which is in nice colors, you can have it, you all can have one. The handout is actually a combination of...
What about these blue?
Yeah, just pass that down, they're all, that's, the handout you'll see there, those are the sorts of things you can look at that have some of the issues that you want to get into, and examples of what's done with like height restrictions, extra buffering next to residential uses, screening requirements, etcetera. That document also has the concept about solar grazing and how they do it when it is incorporated in, that we could build off of even the concepts we were talking about. And when you get to the end, then again, I stuck them together, the the next part is the excerpt, it starts with the page that has land development requirements, you can incorporate those in, either as part of the land development ordinance companion, or if you made it a conditional use, these would actually be the express criteria that you would use, just like we do in other areas.
Did I miss on this one? We jumped a streak to large solar energy facility without actually ever defining it, and this one or the other one, did we?
No, there's a definition section at the beginning, that, you know, work that out.
At the beginning of this one, there's a definition, but large solar energy facility is not in the definition list, because I went looking for it before, Tom. And then in this ordinance, we're using that phrase.
Well, if you look at solar electric energy facilities, electric generated facilities, its main purpose is to generate and supply electricity, and consists of one or more solar electric, etcetera, etcetera. Does not include solar electric energy systems meant for residential or accessory personally used. They're basically saying it is the solar.
Okay.
And actually, part of, part of what I would suggest...
I don't know why we're making such a big fuss over this, when they can call almond milk, and it doesn't come from a cow, so we're worrying about a solar farm, the word farm, you know, why don't we crap about the milk situation?
One of the brands fixed that, I went to open my fridge the other day, and my wife drinks that stuff, and it said malt. Within that, yes, I'm renewing.
I'm sorry, but I just...
I would suggest, in fact, the handout, part of the handout, one of the things I would do to, on that, is I would include within the definition, the additional definitions where you see here, starred on the first page. And the reason I have NA next to accessory solar energy systems is because that would be dealt with in that other ordinance. Here, you would want to enhance the definition, like you're saying, of the principal solar energy systems, so what we would want to do is enhance the definitions of the large-scale type to include everything that's written in that more technical verbiage there.
Actually, I think C belongs in your other one as well.
Where?
Under your industrial one, C, "All large solar energy production facilities shall be designed, located, and ordered to prevent reflective glare toward any inhabited building on the space's properties." I actually believe that should be in the other one also.
Oh, they do, they're, I think it does address that.
Okay, then I missed it.
No, no, let me find it, I know there's a...
I missed it.
Shall be screening and visiting, shall be...
Where you understand where it's going to end up then?
On this one, on page three, where it starts down on this, to be exactly what...
On the second one you were talking about, it was about the glaring coming. I didn't see it on that first one either.
It was a quick thing, and it's a lot of pages, so it couldn't be...
What kind of inspections will the township be doing on stuff like this?
What, the home, what, the home systems?
Either or.
These would be just like your UCC, your code, like your home, occupancy building permit process. Do you have your inspected?
Which would help, come on.
Yes, yes, those are in like UCC.
Yeah, I mean, we got with the fire guys and that, we, they already, you know, with the setbacks on the roofs, you can't so much, and then with the disconnects, well, the coat's getting ready to change, disconnect's gonna go on the outside of the house now.
So, that's a surprise they haven't been there. I, let me tell you, just one more, if I put one in, it was going on the outside of my house.
Now, this ordinance actually has that, they're off, I guess they were ahead of their time off there.
Don't mention the fire guys, I just call them fire guys, because I could...
Well, what if, let me ask you this, what do they do, I mean, what happens now, if you do get a fire, and you have, the fire is underneath where your panels are, fire them and just cut them out of the way?
Oh, all pets are off there, yeah.
That's this argument about, what a lot of places are starting to say, is you have to leave gaps, you're not allowed to keep them stacked tight the whole way across the roof, like this is the way they have.
Halfways.
Yeah, you've got to leave ways, every now and again, so they can cut down into that roof and open that up. But, yeah, you look at the ones down in Florida and that, there's no hope for getting into that roof if there's a fire. It's just, a couple days, all them roofs are gonna be gone anyway.
And then he even asked me about the, like, the markings?
Yes.
It's in the NEC.
Yeah. Tom, thank you.
Anybody else have any other, anybody in the audience have any questions?
Well, I got a question, is the audience, what's your meaning on this whole thing? You don't care, you think it's a terrible idea, what?
Go ahead, Kathy, come on.
I think it just belongs in certain places, that's all, I'm aware of it.
No comment?
I can see him lose farm ground for it, for, you know, for farm ground.
Hey, some of these companies are offering big money to let you come in, because not only do they get to get the electricity, they get to claim the carbon credits. Yeah, what we're gonna push. Well, the whole problem was, I did look into putting in a system that's about with farm and the wedding business. And you know, it's like anything else in today's society, if you type something into your computer, you can bet you're gonna get advertisements and calls about that thing.
Oh, yeah.
Google is selling our souls away, folks, but, you know, what can you do? So, yeah, I got, I got a thing in the mail after I've done some of my research that said, are you interested in?
Thank you very much. Any old business? I guess that hearing that they had last week, or two weeks ago?
Yes.
Went in favor of Range for the tanks?
Yeah, the appeal was upheld, we haven't received, we've received the decision in terms of its outcome, they sent notice that they had denied the appeal, they have, they have 45 days to issue a formal opinion on it. It's forthcoming.
Did you happen to check, a lot of the Georges in here, he was gonna check with the drawings for the golf course, and where Range put in that parking area, is out of the commercial area that we zoned?
Yeah, I looked at that, and I can share some of that stuff with you, and I went back and looked at some of the records for that, and from then, and it, what they're doing appears to be, it is, that was pursuant to a previous permit that was issued under George's predecessor.
Well, I don't understand how that can be, because we, we has, we changed the zoning for them, we added to that piece there. And so, Bill Clark, it was Bill Clark that was here, that was, that was not done before that.
Well, I can show you the, the history of the stuff, I'll forward you whatever, see if you want to take a look at it.
Yeah, I'd like to see that. Any other old business?
No.
And I, and I cut short on your public input by asking them that question, I apologize, I should have waited.
Oh, I didn't know you did that.
Well, when I asked them what was their opinion, I thought I should have waited, I apologize.
It's all right, okay. That's it, make a motion for a German?
I'll make a motion to a German.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned.